I should've said something better than "want to hear." No, I don't know if it'll ever, it's not at that level.
Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to this evening's City Council regular meeting. Would you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Lord, bless us all as we meet together this evening. Grant us time and understanding to aid in our deliberations. Grant us patience and wisdom so that our actions shall be beneficial to all. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Member Olson?
Here. Good evening.
Member Berentine?
Present.
Member Cuesta?
Present.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Potem Russell?
Present.
All six present.
Thank you. Consideration of minutes of the previous session, I would entertain a motion for the minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any changes or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, please vote.
I'll vote to my cast. Let the record show, six eyes.
Moving on to Agenda Item Six, recognition of scheduled public comments. Our first speaker this evening is Lacey Epperson, and she will address counsel regarding Giving Heart. Good evening, Ms. Epperson. Would you please state your name and address for the record? And?
Yes, good evening. My name is Lacey Epperson. My address is 5310 South Broadway Circle, Apartment 6-102, Inglewood 80113. Alright. To the council members, Inglewood residents, business owners, and citizens, I am not here to disprove or stigmatize or denounce what has been stated. I'm here as an Inglewood resident, a local business manager, a Christian, a Giving Heart volunteer, and a former homeless addict. I'm here to speak the truth of Giving Heart and the homeless community that I work with and volunteer with every Tuesday. So I'm a full-time Tuesday volunteer at Giving Heart. And, um, sorry, I'm a little nervous. But since I started volunteering at Giving Heart, I felt like God led me to that path to kind of give back for what was given to me. And since I've been a volunteer at Giving Heart, I have basically formed what I would consider a second family with the guests that come in there every Tuesday. You know, on the outside, parents, you know, dealing with the homeless is not something that's particularly everyone's, you know, cup of tea. But underneath, they're all people, and I was once one of those people. And at the core of Giving Heart, what I see every Tuesday is a place that gives, you know, a safe haven for the guests, whether they need, you know, food or shelter for just a few hours. And there's also resources there for them to get jobs and, you know, spend time to get IDs and birth certificates. And for those of them, you know, that are driven to do a little bit further, there's resources for that too. But I guess I felt called to speak on behalf of what I would consider my second family. On the outer surface, when you're homeless, you don't look the greatest in a public-presented, you know, society. You know, and I think that the difference between me now and my second family is that I shower a little bit more now. I have clean clothes, and I have a roof over my head. And I now have a stable job. But that is about it. At the core, they're just people needing love and hope and faith. And that is what Giving Heart gives to them. Now, it's not a realistic expectation to think that every single person that goes to Giving Heart is gonna someday have a house, or someday have a job, or be mentally stabilized. But at Giving Heart, if there is one or two people that can be changed from that place, then in my opinion, it's worth it. And in my own life journey, it took a couple of strangers to make that connection with me, that people connect myself and the wonderful volunteers at Giving Heart, that we make that genuine connection. And it's not fake, because that would completely not even be the definition of genuineness. And that's what it is. It's a genuine, loving community of a family that God has put there. And I can't speak on behalf of, you know, what the future looks like or anything, but I know that when I go every Tuesday, and what I see there is that we're doing the best we can with what we have and how we know how to do it. And, you know, we can't know what we don't know. So, you know, with particular areas of, you know, I think the topics that have been discussed, you know, we obviously need help, you know, financially, you know, resource-wise, and especially with the mental health piece. But I think that it starts with that genuine connection that people can give. And like I said, on the surface, we're all the same, or we're all different on the surface, but on inside, we all have problems. And that's the only difference, I think, with the guests that come in there, is that they are easier to be stereotyped because of their outward appearance. But on the inside, we all have that ickiness. And we all need help, and we all need love. And that is what it is. And Giving Heart is a place of love, faith, and hope. And, you know, I just, I can't even tell you. Some days, I have really bad days, and I look forward to going there and seeing my second family of those people that are amazing people. They are, they are really amazing people. If people would just take the time to get to know them. And that was what I needed to have happen to me, was that genuine connection from a stranger. I don't even have a good relationship with my biological family still, but I do have a genuine connection with many of them and with many of the other people that go in and outside of those doors. It was weighing on my heart to say some Martin Luther King Jr. quotes. And one of them is, "Darkness can't drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate can't drive out hate, only love can do that. And love is the only force capable of transforming an enemy into a friend."
Thank you, Ms. Epperson. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Our next speaker this evening is Chris Carr. He will address counsel regarding homelessness in Inglewood. Good evening, Pastor Carr.
Hello. Good to see you all. I'm Chris Carr. I reside at 3751 South Huron Street, here in Inglewood. First, thank you all for doing a tough and often thankless job for us, on our behalf. When I first moved to Denver in the early 1990s, fresh out of college, I worked at the Samaritan House Shelter downtown. Back then, as it does today, Samaritan House sheltered hundreds of men, women, and families every night. For a kid who grew up in the suburbs, it was quite an education. The most convicting epiphany for me was that these were indeed people. Some of them smelled pretty bad, some were pretty unstable, physically, mentally, and emotionally. Many had endured tragic circumstances in their lives. A few were quite dangerous. Many were philanthropic and caring toward others. Some seemed to carry extraordinarily bad luck around with them, and some had simply fallen on hard times. But they were, each and every one of them, people. They had fathers and mothers, brothers and sisters, aunts and uncles, nieces and nephews, husbands and wives. They had favorite foods, hobbies, bad habits, good habits, jokes to tell, tears to shed, possessions that were important to them, as well as hopes, dreams, and fears that both motivated and paralyzed them. Now, 25 years later, I've been reminded of those people by the ones that I've met recently at Giving Heart and regularly in our pews at Spirit of Hope. These two are real people with fascinating life stories. The faith tradition I call home is very clear about people. All of us are wonderfully made in the image of a loving God. We all have the capacity to do good and to do harm. We are all subject to opportunities and threats every day. And yet, each of us is born in a particular place at a particular time, so we also reflect a striking diversity. This diversity is both genetic and circumstantial. Many of us who find ourselves in this particular time and place won the lottery. We live in one of the most prosperous, free, and safe countries on the face of the earth. Most of us in this room have never experienced a life-threatening lack of food, shelter, clothing, or medical care, either because of our own capacity for hard work or because we have connections, family or otherwise, that provide a safety net. So it is difficult to understand and relate to people who, for whatever reason, are in serious need. Their experience is not ours, and we are instinctively wired to be wary of the unknown, of the other. I volunteered at Giving Heart here in Inglewood last Wednesday evening, as I have every Wednesday evening this season when the severe weather shelter network has been activated. I was talking with a couple of our guests when it dawned on me that I should ask them what they would say to you if they were here tonight. They both spoke of the understandable but unfortunate fear of the other, of the unknown. They wanted us to know that they are people, just like us. The previous time I was at Giving Heart, two young guests plopped down on the floor and began playing a card game that I recognized because my teenage daughter plays it too. And I would be remiss not to say that all of the characteristics of homeless people I've mentioned this evening I've also found in comfortably housed members of churches that I have served over the years. Tonight, I'm delivering to you a pledge signed by members and friends of Spirit of Hope United Methodist Church. The people who have signed these documents are citizens and supporters of the city of Inglewood. Many of us live here, and all of us participate in the life of this community by shopping at its businesses, eating at its restaurants, attending its schools, earning paychecks, paying taxes, voting in elections, and caring for our neighbors, including those of our neighbors who cannot produce a local utility bill. You will recognize the names here because you know these people. Our message to you is simple. We care for people who are homeless in Inglewood, and we encourage our elected leaders to do the same with our support. How can you do this? First, we ask you to know the subject and to show some humility and curiosity when you don't. It's easy to know a little bit, but a little bit of knowledge can be dangerous and misleading, as has been evident in this room over the past couple of months. Learn more, and be open to the idea that there is always more to learn. Pitting local businesses and homeowners against the homeless in the faith community is simplistic and narrow-minded. Truly wise leadership strives for creative, win-win alternatives and mobilizes diverse constituencies to work for the greater good. We also ask that you make a priority of working with us through Change the Trend to solve this daunting problem. When you talk about budgets, we ask that you remember that the budgets that we craft, whether as households or as a city, are moral documents. Our priorities are reflected in where we put our time and money, and our worthiness as a city is reflected in how we treat the neediest among us. We expect people who are homeless in Inglewood to be a high priority, and for that priority to be reflected in the budgets you craft so carefully. Rather than scapegoating and passing the buck, we ask that our city take responsibility for contributing to solutions through its time and money, which are, after all, entrusted to your care by us, the people of Inglewood. Thank you for your time and your attention. May God bless you, the city of Inglewood, and all of its people.
Thank you, Pastor Carr. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Our next scheduled speaker this evening is Elaine Holtz. She will address counsel.
My topic?
I'm sorry, Elaine Holtz, from 3330 South Leighton Street, Number 706, Inglewood 80113. My topic is YEEF. If the taxpayers knew the truth of how their properties are being managed, they would fill this room from wall to wall. They would be outraged, as I am, to discover city employees in control of city-owned properties with exclusive control, no checks and balances. Why are the rentals so low? And the maintenance so high? And the legal fees so high? I'm an old real estate hag. From 2009 to 2009 to 2015, a period of seven years, considering seven properties that they manage. And this is what we received. In those seven years, we received a total of $148,423, $148,423 in dollars on seven commercial property? That is a very bad investment. That means that we received approximately, we netted approximately $3,000 each year on each one of those properties. Doesn't that make you wonder? It sure as heck does me. Under a licensed experience realtor or broker, we could have saved our fire department. They know how to lease. They know how to handle renting. They know how to handle everything. And not only that, we have recourse with them. They're licensed. That means if they do anything contrary to what we want them to do, all we have to do is pick up the phone and call the real estate commission. They can lose their license, and I guarantee you, I've worked in the business for too many years, no broker is gonna jeopardize his livelihood licensed for one client. That's ridiculous. And so what I'm trying to say to you this evening is I am demanding, as a citizen of this community for now 20 years, that the city commissioners, our city council, obtain a forensic audit of EEF. If you think you're gonna get information on the other method, no. I've already talked to the various CPAs that do auditing for the city and for some of the other boards. They do not do a financial. They do what they call a system. In other words, Inglewood has always had a good credit because the system we follow is according to the letter of the law, has nothing to do with the fact that we have been in jeopardy financially for so many years. To think that we could have saved our fire department infuriates me. I tried very hard, and it was the better choice between South Metro and Denver. But I'm not happy with it. I'm not happy with a lot of things. And we are putting our people under such tremendous financial pressure by all these expenditures, tearing down, rebuilding, tearing down, rebuilding, putting money into a so-called golf course that nobody really wants to use. You can see its popularity tonight in your study session was 3% to do anything there. And we've already given parts of it away. So what do we have left? You better take into consideration that the people in Inglewood are looking at all of you. They are listening to all of you. And as the last election showed, they're taking it to heart. So just beware. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Holtz? Seeing none, oh, Councilmember Berentine?
Just this question, Elaine. Where did you get the information that?
That's interesting. I had obtained this information before I was injured, actually in March, before I was injured. And I really didn't have a chance to go the following steps that I intended to go.
Could I ask a follow-up?
But I have 78 pages.
Elaine, can I ask a follow-up question? Where did you receive the information from?
EEF.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holtz. Our next scheduled speaker this evening is Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident, will address counsel regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening, counsel. I've been thinking about Giving Heart and the homeless situation, and it has stirred some memories for me. We have another lost generation. Forty-six years ago, I became involved in one of the first homeless ministries in the Denver area aimed at young people. It was called The Carpenter's House. I had become a Christian at the Billy Graham Crusade in 1965 and graduated from the Denver Seminary in 1972. And I felt God was calling me to help the people on the streets in Denver. We were amateurs with no formal medical or psychological training, and we did not know about zoning restrictions. The homeless were called "street people" in those days, and the Christians were called "Jesus freaks." I had learned that God had loved me and had a plan for my life. The plan was to reach out to my lost generation and to share with them that their lives could have meaning and purpose. They could get clear of their addictions. They could help change the world. There were drugs like LSD and others. Then many of my generation were just lost. They felt no reason to live. They had no purpose and no hope. A quote from Robert Morgan, "I will never forget those days when an entire generation of people turned on, tuned in, and dropped out." It was Timothy Leary, 1967. In 1968, Martin Luther King Jr. and Bobby Kennedy were assassinated. Richard Nixon became the president, and the war in Southeast Asia divided the nation. Riots erupted in the streets, and students took over the campuses. Bombs went off, and institutions of all kinds were attacked. Martin Luther King and Billy Graham were two of the people who started what the church historians are now calling "The Fifth Great Awakening" in the 1960s and '70s. In the middle of San Francisco, 8 Asbury District, a Christian couple opened an evangelistic coffeehouse where disillusioned young people began to find Christ. Soon, Christians everywhere opened coffeehouses and engaged in university outreach. Ministries started, souls were saved. The winds of revival blew thousands of hippies into the Pacific Ocean to be baptized and into swimming pools and church baptistries from coast to coast. The Jesus movement and church, the Jesus movement propelled a generation of young people, including me, into missions and ministries. That movement was the inspiration for The Carpenter's House. We were able to help quite a few people find their way out of the darkness. Quite a few did not want any help, and there was nothing we could do for those guys. Many found a reason to live. It was learning that God loved them and that a personal relationship with Jesus could transform their lives and lead them to discover their purpose and be the strength for recovery. Giving Heart is doing that work in our city right now for the current lost generation. Our city is on the front lines of this new war. Like us at The Carpenter's House, most of the people involved are volunteers just wanting to help people in trouble and showing them the healing power of God. I'm very thankful that they're here, even though there are a number of difficulties that their presence has created. If you ask me, I don't know what the solution is to the problem on South Broadway. Would there be a better location? Perhaps another great awakening? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Cohn? Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Our next speaker this evening is Mike Lindgren. He will address counsel regarding Giving Heart.
Hi, I'm Mike Lindgren. I own Keck of Apes, right next to Giving Heart at 4346 South Broadway. And I'm a little frustrated by the police saying they haven't seen anything, and everyone's saying it's my imagination. Or when I come here at Giving Heart, saying it's my imagination. So I brought some pictures. Oh. So here is a driveway to a residence behind one business on the other side of Giving Heart. Well early before cold weather begins. These are baseball bats that don't actually exist, but I was looking for a picture. There's one gentleman that has two baseball bats strapped crisscross on his back like a samurai, but I was unable to locate that one. But here's this gentleman talking to officers. There's that driveway to a residence again. That's the alley right behind my store. And by the way, when you ask people to move so they don't get run over, very, very belligerent, and lucky if it doesn't turn violent. That's across the street. I don't know if you can see from this far, but there's about three or four people hanging out there. Used to congregate behind the building across the street from Giving Heart. And by the way, if you recognize those trees, those have been taken down or trimmed up by the bank so that there's no more problems over there. Here's my front, the entrance to my parking lot. That's a Sunday for three hours. It's amazing how slow we get when we have no customers. By the way, remember those cones, because I'm gonna come right back to those. That's my parking lot after the trees were trimmed up before a cold weather night, somebody taking a nap. That's the third person that I've had to call the police on to ask to move. After the police showed up, asked her to move, she grabbed a piece of cardboard that she was using for a mattress, drug it out to the sidewalk, laid it back down. Police came back. That's kind of the parking I'm talking about, trying to make a right-hand turn from Broadway when this keeps happening over and over. Makes it difficult, if not impossible. Another one. This is my truck, actually. Because of somebody parked in front of my access to the parking lot, that was me unlocking the gate in the morning. There's my entrance again. This guy kicked back. Can't quite see all this cigarette butts and litter. And by the way, let me go back real quick. That astre right there, the top comes off, and I actually got to sit there from my front window once a guy squat over it and use it for a toilet. And no, I don't have pictures before you ask, because I'm trying to forget that. That's a usual cold weather night, minus police. At the last cold weather, the- At the last cold weather, they showed up and parked. That's where they parked and talked to Giving Heart for, I'd say, a good twenty, thirty minutes. That's right in my parking lot so no one else could come in. That's my driveway and a car poking out. By the way, on the driveway, the reason I'm kind of anal about that is I've already seen one car get hit by someone trying to drive through, and I've heard the horn go off five times trying to get homeless people to move out of the way so they don't get hit. And these cones that I was talking about earlier belonged to Giving Heart. First time I went over there, I asked them not to park right by the entrance. She evidently passed on the word, and it was great for a couple of weeks, and then kicked back up again. So I asked again, and she started throwing cones out, even though Inglewood code enforcement won't let me do it. This year, I have not seen those cones. And by the way, this is a picture from Google Street View. And I think I've bought her time. There's the trees that got trimmed up, baseball bat guy. There's a bed that wasn't in the trees, which is why they had to trim it up. And there are plenty more pictures that I don't have. And I've bought her time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Lindgren? Seeing none, thank you for coming, Mr. Lindgren. We will move on to unscheduled public comments, Agenda Item 7. Our first speaker is Harvey Whitmire regarding Giving Heart. Good evening, Mr. Whitmire. Would you give your name and address first?
Yes, my name is Harvey Whitmire, and my address is 9623 Townsville in Littleton. Mayor Pro Tem and council members and city staff, thank you for offering the time for people like ourselves to take up your time with issues that are obviously prominent here. Tonight, I just want to offer a brief statement of support for the work and the ministry of Giving Heart. As a pastor of Crossfire Church, which is located right here in Inglewood, I value what Giving Heart brings to the table to address the needs of people who do not have homes. Our church does not have the capacity to serve that need in any significant dimension, and there are other churches like ours that are either too small or focused in different ways. So when we see somebody like Giving Heart doing something for the homeless, we clap our hands and say, "What can we do to help you?" We support and endorse Giving Heart and their capacity to address some of those needs. Their core purpose is to serve the needs of the homeless. There's no one church, or ministry, or nonprofit, or government entity that can provide all of the sufficient resources, but each one of us does something toward that end. Giving Heart is especially valuable in my eyes because it offers to meet both personal, spiritual, and emotional needs in addition to offering the material needs for the people in need. In this way, they provide a hand up as well as a hand out. And their volunteers and their leadership sacrifice parts of their lives to make other lives so much better. I'm particularly impressed by testimonies like Ms. Epersen. As a pastor, I listen to that, and I say, "That makes it all worthwhile when you're in the ministry or in the ministry of giving to other people." Now somehow, in recent times, Giving Heart became the target of criticism by some. I want to say that Giving Heart is not the problem in our city. Homelessness is the problem, and its causes are the root of the problem. Giving Heart simply offers a small piece of the solution, not the entire solution. I encourage the council to direct its focus on the problem, which is homelessness, rather than on one of the entities providing a piece of that solution. Now, at the recent forum sponsored by Change the Trend, this was very helpful in my eyes, educating those of us who attended regarding the very multiple causes and also impacts of being without a home. It also revealed some of the problems that businesses may face now and in the future. But we cannot kick the can down the road. That is one of the problems that we often have in government, is to kick the can down the road timely-wise or into some other neighborhood. But it's in our city, and it's for ours to deal with. Therefore, I encourage the council to seek ways to partner with Change the Trend, take a bite out of the causes and the impacts of being homeless. This is not an easy task, as you well know, but it is a necessary task. Your work as the council, in closing, in closing, is valuable in every facet of governing this city. I appreciate your personal investment. Your job is not easy, but it is necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor Whitmire. Are there any questions for Pastor Whitmire? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Our next scheduled speaker this evening is Jerry Walker, speaking about homelessness. Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens. Thank you, sir. My name is Jerry Walker. I listened about the homeless here in Colorado, and I've heard Councilman Berantine talk about it and the violence. And then I heard about 25 people say that these are the most wonderful people in the world. And I kept listening, and I kept trying to decide who was what. So on Wednesday of last week, I thought I would take a ride over and see what was going on with the homeless. As you see, I have a number of pictures here. Picture at the top was taken from across the street. That sidewalk is completely blocked. I have a witness that had to walk into the street in the snow at 5:00 in the afternoon in rush hour to get around that blue car that's sitting there. And then I had, since I was taking pictures, two of the wonderful people from that group came across four lanes of traffic to beat on the back of my car, kick it, and try to intimidate me into stop taking pictures. I have the right to take a picture anytime I want if it's in public. After that, and I have the pictures of the... The two middle pictures in the bottom are the two people who actually attacked my vehicle and came to the window of my car to threaten me. The gentleman on the right walked up to my window of my car and told me that if I continued to take pictures, I would be very, very sorry. You really don't want to say that to an ex-Marine. I wanted to see. Here's the proof that I have. I'm not making some story up. This is the proof that I have. But I got news for the people who are taking care of the homeless. Do not worry about the police. They never heard the word homeless. I mentioned the word homeless when I gave them a statement 12 times. Nowhere's in the police report does it say homeless. Nowhere. Tells about these poor people who didn't know that they could get their picture taken, and that was it. Nothing else. How safe... How safe do you feel if that's the way we're going to call the police and they're going to take care of what I think is a crime? So I'm inviting the city council to come on down there and see what's going on. Walk down there and see what's going on. You're hearing all the stories from everybody, but you know what? I don't see any city council people in any of these pictures, and I don't see any police officers in these pictures. This is a place where we get a lot of police calls, and look, no police calls. No police. Is that what city council wants our city to be? It's not what I want my city to be. And this is my city, and this is the ultimate government here. Everybody else on down works for you. So if it's going to change, you got to change it, or you got to leave it alone. Totally up to you. It's not up to me. I can't change it. I can only show you what's going on with what we call... Some people call them pictures. I call them evidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Are there any questions? Councilmember Berantine?
I just need a quick clarification. You gave, I guess, all of us a copy of this police report. Are you saying that this police report is not accurate?
This police report is a work of fiction.
Okay. Have you contacted the police department to... I assume there's some way to correct that or at least have some input. I assume we'll find out later.
I went to the police office. I went to police headquarters and used the red phone because the police are well locked up in their offices. You can't just walk in and see a policeman. We don't have a police department like that. We have a police department that is a fortified castle. And yes, I did talk to someone who actually came out and sat and talked to me, and he told me that Officer Davis would call me to make any changes in this.
Okay.
You going to ask me if he's called? Because he answers no.
All right. We can do a council request later. That was the only question I had, sir. Thank you.
I have requested any video from any body cams from any police who are at this incident. I have yet to hear back from that, but it hasn't gone three days yet.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd like to know if giving hope is going to pay for the dent in the back of my car.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Our next speaker this evening is J.J. Margotti.
That would be Marjana.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, not a problem.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the time this evening. I want to say I'm really amazed at how giving everybody is and wanting to help everybody. I mean, Giving Heart and having the Reverend step up and some preachers from some of the different facilities come up here and talk about how great the city of Inglewood is to talk about trying to help the homeless. And I truly commend you guys that are actually trying to do something. I really do. They have a tough job, but the reality of it is it's impacting our homes, our businesses, and everything else. I currently live at 209 East Radcliffe Avenue. I am a resident of the city of Inglewood, and I do have a business here, which has been here one year. Last week, I was at the Change the Trend meeting, and I have to say, as a person that's in business and listening to the kumbaya that I saw there, I heard no solutions that were being offered to help the homeless. I heard we were giving food away. We were giving different shelter for night away when it's cold out, which is really commendable. It's really amazing from that standpoint that people have the ability to do that, to open their homes and businesses and what they can to try to help these folks. But the reality is, feeding the homeless only brings more homeless. We don't feed bears and have bear attacks and not expect that to happen. The reality is, feeding people does not solve the homeless problem. It needs to be part of a coalition or a group like Change the Trend, but it can't just be made up of pastors and people with huge hearts that want to help. It has to be made up of a coalition of people that really care about the community in whole, for the businesses, for the homes, for the schoolchildren and everything else. I'll be glad to sit on that board and have an input, but we have to start to make change. Having people standing around for a sandwich only gets them to come back for another sandwich. The reality of Giving Heart is, they're there one day a week to feed these people. Now, I want to have just a brief second here. I talked at this meeting the other day, and the quick response I got, not only from the homeless, was a bucket of shit delivered to my business front door of human fecal matter in an orange bucket. That was the response. I find that unacceptable. The day later from me having that meeting, I received a letter from the city of Inglewood telling me that I'm selling motorcycles at our location, which we do sell motorcycles there from our customers. It's a customer-to-customer transaction. We have been barred from selling motorcycles up and down Broadway because we don't have 75 feet of storefront. We need to look at what's going on in your business development area and have some really straight conversations because we are being restricted to bring in revenue and, on top of that, have situations like this go on. So I want to say thank you very much for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. We have a question. Councilmember Berantine?
Some of this information was, I think, what you had just said about a letter that got sent from the city the day after that meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Prior to that letter, when was the... When was the last communication you had with the city prior to that letter that was sent the day after the meeting for Change the Trend?
Prior to that, in regards to our business licenses and things like that, probably seven months, maybe longer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Joe Anderson. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Joe Anderson, 4061 South Cherokee Street, Inglewood here. I'm a resident. Yesterday, we celebrated the resurrection of Jesus. Resurrection is the first taste of the resurrection and restoration of all things. We live in a broken world. I might point to things like mass shootings, political tension, or violent international conflict, but I want to point to something else far more fundamental as evidence that this place is really messed up, the very existence of death itself. The statistics aren't good. 100% of us die. The resurrection tells us that death will be undone, and all of the bad things in the world will come untrue. When that day comes and all things are put to right, we will say that the kingdom of God has finally come to the world in its fullness and to Inglewood. While we wait for that reality, we can begin pulling the kingdom into the present by bringing reconciliation and peace to our neighborhoods and city. We're not there yet. Well, so what will our city look like when that day comes? Businesses will flourish. We'll all have great relationships with our neighbors. Homelessness will be a distant memory. We're not there yet, as you can tell by the evidence here tonight, but we want to be headed that way, and we want as much as we can to have as much as we can right now. So we want the agencies that serve the homeless working themselves out of a job, and we want to resolve conflicts between Giving Heart and their neighbors. Where do conflicts come from in our community? They come from conflicts in our hearts, unfulfilled desires that draw us into battle. No human heart is free from the compulsion to go to war for what we want. On Friday, we remembered the crucifixion of Jesus, the Messiah, the day that the perfect King bore the guilt of all humanity. There is no conflict that His death did not pay to resolve. Yesterday, we celebrated the resurrection. He rose from the dead to certify that every conflict is, in principle, already resolved. Reconciliation has been bought, paid for, and certified for the 4,300 block of South Broadway. So what are the next steps? Giving Heart and the neighboring businesses must first sit down at the same table, clearly lay out their concerns. This isn't the place to resolve the conflict. It's not going to happen in this room. Second, they need to find their way to forgiveness, again, already bought and paid for. And finally, they need to make the appropriate changes so they can move forward in peace and unity. I talked to Councilmembers Wink and Martinez, and I understand that they are both willing to help facilitate reconciliation. Giving Heart has expressed their willingness, and I believe several business owners are willing as well. I'd love for us to be back here in two weeks reporting that everything is resolved and all parties are singing kumbaya together, but it probably won't be that easy. But hopefully, we'll be making progress. Hope we'll be able to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming this evening. Our final speaker this evening is Scott Moore. Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I am terrified to speak here tonight. I'm not terrified of public speaking. I do that often. But what I'm terrified of is the retribution I hope won't come, but I suspect will due to what I have to say tonight, the kind of retribution that J.J. mentioned. I was victim-shamed by a memo that was put out by Sergeant McGrath. I didn't understand why he discredited myself and other business owners, why he neglected to include accurate and complete information about 911 calls, why he neglected to include information about what had happened to us at the hands of the thugs that come to the Giving Heart. And then I learned that Sergeant McGrath is closely connected to one of the churches and/or businesses that are supporting Giving Heart. So... that are supporting Giving Heart. So I'm gonna take the high road on this. My fears are for the worst, but I think that maybe everyone deserves a chance. And as some of the preachers will tell you, we're all weak. We all have our weaknesses. And perhaps the passion that Sergeant McGrath has for the cause of the Giving Heart may have colored his ability to set aside any conflict of interest in this issue. So I'd like to ask the city council and the city manager and the chief of police, ask for a re-review of that memo, a revision and a revisitation of not only the police report that was mentioned tonight to be an error, but of the police report that was not accurate or produced other than in memo form regarding Kelly Martinez's assault. And hopefully, we won't have to be afraid of the people that we pay and trust to protect us.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Moore, there is one question for you. Councilmember Berentine?
Which memo are you referring to when you said, "What is the date of that?"
I can send you the date. It was a few weeks ago.
Okay.
And I don't recall the title, but it was following an investigation that Sergeant McGrath conducted with his undercover police folks. I'll send it to you, and hopefully you can send it to the other council members.
And in all fairness, are you aware of the memo that Sergeant McGrath did in June of 2017? And while I understand you have found out that he was on the board that oversees Giving Heart and Loving, and that he was on the board at that time in June of 2017, but that he issued a memo in 2017, even though he was on the board of that at the time, saying that stated in the memo that suggesting that this organization move from that location? Are you aware of that memo?
I was not aware of that memo.
I'll make sure you have a copy of it.
This one mentioned me, and in a very unflattering light, which is frightening coming from the police.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any response to public comment? Councilmember Berentine?
I want to thank everybody for coming out. Lacy Epperson, I hope I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. Congratulations. I mean, bless you for the volunteer work that you do and being an example that while it's a small percentage and it's a difficult road, that there is hope. I appreciate Pastor Carr's message, and it kind of leans a little to some of the concerns that ended up with Change the Trend, is that when I moved to this community well over 20 years ago, I found a community, as you do with your congregation and your church, a community of people who are compassionate and giving and kind and generous. And it is somewhat offensive that the tenor of the talk has been a little finger-wagging that somehow we don't know or appreciate these as human beings. And I think this community, for its entire existence, has had homeless, and they have appreciated them as human beings. They are our, according to Giving Heart, since most of them are based from Inglewood, they are our brothers and sisters, our children, our parents, our nieces and nephews as well. So I think a little bit of the tenor that it has taken, as if there is a lack of compassion or understanding for who these people are, is misguided. As I think your congregation, who I think are amazing people, and I've enjoyed attending several times at your church, are very giving and very compassionate people, and they are from this community, as all of the other 20 churches in our areas, and they are giving compassionate people. I think we understand a lot more than you are giving us credit for. I think that we have to understand that, you know, Jerry Walker and J.J. and Mike, they have brothers and sisters and families and hopes and dreams and hobbies too, and that we need to make sure that we are not taking away from one for the other. I understand that that's your mission, but we have to make sure, and my job is to make sure, that I am keeping the brothers and sisters and mothers and fathers of some of the people that they have had to make tough decisions within this community safe as well, and that their rights are protected and that their safety is acknowledged and taken care of. If somebody is gonna go and come to a city council meeting and have a question on whether accurate information is being given, and then they go to find out what's going on, take pictures and find out, try to get a little more educated, and they're attacked, and they don't feel that the police or Giving Heart is responding well, then we're still not dealing with the issues. And I agree wholeheartedly with you that we need to stop using the homeless as a political agenda and start addressing the issues that are actually happening. Aside from shaming, which I understand from Scott, we don't want to do that to our community. If they have real issues that are going on, they cannot be solved if we are not honest about what's happening and address them. That doesn't make the homeless any less human, and it doesn't make the businesses wrong or the community for wanting to be safe. So, but I do appreciate your presentation. Very well done. Presentation by Mr. Cohen, I do tend to forget that you did start, I guess, as a pastor as well. So I appreciate historian and pastor, and you just keep us informed, and I greatly appreciate it. Elaine, I do agree that, as I've made it very clear, that I think that Eve and Emurf, the only way we're gonna find out, regardless of how comfortable we are with how they conduct themselves now, which came with a lot of hard work that both you and Doug Cohen started. They would not have open meetings and minutes and be public if it weren't for the work that you guys started well four, six years ago. We may be comfortable with how they handle things now, but we do need to have a reckoning of where we were, what's happened, and I think a forensic audit would be the best. So that takes a majority of council. We will see. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other responses to public comment? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you for those of you that came. I would like to ask council if we could consider putting on a study session the issues of homelessness in our community and what our responsibility as a city. We have not yet really had a study session on this. We have been hearing back and forth every Monday night, different issues, and some of us have engaged in different ways with this, but we have not really spent time as a council. And I think what I heard tonight, and I've been hearing, I think we all have been, in different ways, we need to figure out what our place is in this, since we do have a nonprofit and several churches that are addressing it. We have several businesses that are continuing to suggest that they're being mistreated in some of the ways that things are handled. So I would love to see us do some kind of a, I know that Change the Trend is working. We've got people from the city on the committee, but I think as a council, we probably need to talk about where do we want to be in this and what is our responsibility.
Thank you.
I have two questions.
Okay. Councilmember Berentine?
We had an issue brought up with the police reports, both for Mr. Walker and for Scott Moore's issue, and I would like to know what the process is, if I could just do that as a council request, the process, if somebody does not believe that a police report is accurate, if you could just provide that to council. And I'm not asking for an answer now, but what that process would be and what the timelines would be. And then the other issue that was brought out by Mr., and I'm gonna butcher your last name, Mr. M., Mr. J.J. M., there we go. I'm not gonna even try to butcher it. Thank you very much, has made a statement that he received something that was questioning his business the day after the Change the Trend, that it was dated the day after Change the Trend meeting where he spoke up about issues, and apparently the next day received a bucket of, I mean, so there were some other issues. I don't think the city had anything to do with that, but I would like to, anytime somebody makes an accusation that the city has taken action against their business and that it in any way is connected with a presentation that they make that's negative or maybe controversial, that is of some interest. And if, I would like the timeline for that, what generated the letter, maybe it was just coincidence, but obviously, he does not believe that, and I would like to get some information on that if we could, just the timeline for it, what that was about, and how it coincidentally was dated the next day after, if you could find out.
I'd love to. I guess I'd like to talk to the owner of the business that spoke. I don't want to butcher his name either, to find out exactly whom that letter came from. So I might be able to get that, provide that to you.
I'm sure you could make that part of that council request. I would appreciate it.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone for coming out. I think there have been some incredible suggestions tonight. I think that both of the, everyone speaking on both sides actually has legitimate things to say. And for, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Olson that we do need to have a study session and figure out exactly what is council, city council, responsible for. But I thank you, I thank you, Doug, for reminding us that this is not a new problem. It has been a problem that has existed in the past, and there are things that we can learn from the past in moving forward in the future also. And so I do believe this community is very giving and very compassionate and does have some solutions. But I think that we need to work together to come to the solutions. But I also think there's problems that need to be addressed also. And so I just want to thank you for everyone coming out, and we will hopefully be getting a study session on the agenda in the near future. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Communications Proclamations and Appointments. This evening, we are entertaining a resolution appointing Eric Broda to the Firefighters Pension Board. A resolution appointing Eric Broda to the Firefighters Pension Board for the city of Inglewood, Colorado, whereas the Inglewood Firefighters Pension Board was established in 1999 with the passage of ordinances 99-46 and 49, whereas the Firefighters Pension Board has the responsibility for the general supervision, management, and control of the old higher pension fund, whereas the Inglewood City Council desires to appoint Eric Broda to the City of Inglewood Firefighters Pension Board, whereas city council has requested staff to send this member packets for the board he will be serving on so that he can maintain an understanding of the current issues and rules, whereas council wishes to express its gratitude for the volunteerism and service that this individual wishes to bestow upon the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Inglewood, Colorado, that Eric Broda is hereby appointed as a member of the City of Inglewood Firefighters Pension Board with a term expiring February 1, 2020. I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? Councilmember Questa?
Pardon me. That was the second.
Oh, okay. That was the second. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Moving on to Consent Agenda Item Number Nine. There are one, two, three, four items for approval. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items.
A1, B1.
Yeah, A1, B1, and 2, and C1.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Berentine?
I have a couple of questions on 9A1. I'm not sure that I need to pull it in. 9B1.
Okay. Is Darren Hollingsworth, Darren, could you just come up? City attorney, is it okay to go ahead and ask questions about these two without pulling them? Thank you. This is about CB 11, Colorado Brownfields Revolving Loan Fund. Councilmember Berentine, do you want to ask your question?
On the original, it's the second paragraph up from the bottom. It says in 2017, Boulevard Builders received 1.8 million. Was that earlier?
They applied for and received a loan from the Colorado Brownfields in 2000, last year, 2017.
Uh-huh.
Yes, ma'am.
Wasn't there one, was there any others prior to that? Because it doesn't have any...
Not within the city of Inglewood. So prior to that, in 2000, in 2001, the city of Inglewood was the recipient of a loan. We borrowed money at very favorable terms and very favorable interest rates. So there have only been two loans done within the city of Inglewood.
The developer borrowed money?
Correct.
Right, okay. And then it doesn't have anything under the financial impact, and it says that the environmental cleanup through grants for the Environmental Protection Agency. That's on the very first page of the bill. And then on page five, it says that membership eligibility, and that does include that there's some monies that are put in there. And what's that about?
So the city of Inglewood is under no financial obligation to contribute in any way to this fund. Early, in early renditions, we had administrative money that was given to the city of Inglewood to oversee the fund and administer the fund. Those dollars have since dried up. They've gone away. But the fund is not asking for any funds from any of the participating communities, and now another county is a participating community.
But they, okay, but the document that we're voting on now says membership eligibility and that it's the funding equivalent to $50,000.
I'm not finding that section here.
It's on page five of the, it's like, changes in membership. So I just want to make sure that, because I read that it didn't have any financial, but then when it says, "Membership eligibility, in order to be considered for CB or LF membership, potential members must have contributed." So are you talking about only that initial contribution?
So as part of our original agreement in 2001, we were a contributing member and under a grant, we received, we were a grant recipient. So city dollars were, that was not a check written by the city of Inglewood to make that contribution. It was a contribution through a grant, through grant proceeds from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency.
Okay, so that's a one-time deal?
That's, so I guess what I understand about this provision in the MLA, or memorandum of agreement, any new member city that wants to become a part of this entity, and they can, it's anticipated that they would, they would need to fund that amount of money through another EPA grant or their proceeds.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was all the question I had on that one.
Thank you. The next question is regarding the IGA amendment for Inglewood Trolley Cost Sharing, and so we have Senior Planner Harold Stitt. Good evening, Mr. Stitt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Councilmember Berentine, you want to...
The agreement that we're doing, would it in any way affect any expansion that we would consider? we would consider? I know that there's conversation going on with Swedish about expanding the expansion. Is anything with this IGA that we're doing, would it preclude us from, or interfere or stop us from doing any kind of expansion within the period of this IGA?
No, it would not. The agreement through the IGA with RTD provides funding for the service money through Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. If there are any additional expansions of service, that would have to be paid for through some other source of funds and not the RTD funds. But the IGA does not prevent the expansion of the service, as long as there is some other source of revenue to pay for that.
And if there was any expansion done, would it require this IGA to be redone?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. It has been moved and seconded to approve Consent Agenda Items 9A1, B1, and B2, and C1. Is there any further discussion? If none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11A1, Approval of Ordinances on First Reading, Revisions to the Flood Plane Regulations, Municipal Code, Chapter 16, Section 4, Paragraph 2, Jurisdiction and Applicability. Our staff source is Engineering 3 Paul Weber. Good evening.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Mr. Weber couldn't be with us tonight. I think you know me as well.
It's Weller.
The engineering man.
Correction to the agenda. Thank you. I knew that after I said it.
That's fine. Before you tonight is the first reading of an ordinance that revises the flood plane regulations in the Inglewood Municipal Code. The paragraph that's being revised identifies the areas within the city that are subject to regulations of this chapter. There are two changes being made to this. The first is the effective date on the flood insurance rate maps that affect the entire city is changing from December 17, 2010 to April 18, 2018. This is a routine housekeeping change that the city needs to make in order to make the local regulations be in sync with the latest flood insurance rate maps from FEMA. There has been some revised mapping to flood planes outside the city of Inglewood, and they are shown, they have to be shown on the same map as the city, so we are only affected, guilt by association, I guess. And our flood plane manager at Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, Terry Fade, has given us a memo that confirms that there were no changes made to mapping within our city. Second is, we are adding dry gulch to the municipal code. It has been accepted by both the Colorado Water Conservation Board and the Urban Drainage Flood Control District. The State Board accept, adopted their FAD at their January 22 and 23 board meeting, as was expected, and the Urban Drainage Board has adopted the mapping at their board meeting on March 15. The state and urban drainage now expects the area to be located, or expects to be regulated at the local level as a flood plane. This action is line, is in line with what has been previously presented. And again, I'd like to ensure you that this action does not send the flood plane mapping to FEMA for inclusion onto the National Flood Plane, National Flood Insurance Program. So with that, I would like to open it up to any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Weller?
Nope, he answered them.
Okay, seeing none.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. The next agenda item is 11C1, Contract for Transit Shuttle Services. Staff recommends council approve by motion an agreement between the City of Inglewood and MV Public Transportation Incorporated for the 2018 management, operation, and maintenance of the Inglewood Trolley. The contract amount is $346,208.40. Senior Planner Harold Stitt is here with us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you stated, the contract for MV to provide Inglewood Trolley services for 2018 is $346,208. I would draw your attention to the second page of the contract approval summary, because I think that provides a very clear explanation of the funding for the service. If you look at the top box on that page, there are two entries, the use of funds, the first line is the $346,208, which represents the contract cost. In addition to that, there is an RTD estimate of approximately $40,000 in fuel costs, and those two total together $386,208. That is what RTD estimates the total operating cost of the shuttle, or excuse me, of the Inglewood Trolley would be. Now, in terms of source of funds, RTD is providing a total of $321,124, and the city's portion is $65,084. And you'll notice that both the use and sources of funds are the same, $386,208. So our out-of-pocket costs are actually the $65,084. The way the process works is, we are billed by the operator monthly, we pay that bill, and then we're reimbursed monthly by RTD for the service. So again, our out-of-pocket cost is $65,000, which is incorporated into 2018 community development budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Stitt? Councilmember Berantine?
I assume the formula that they're coming up with to do the lost fare piece of it is the actual ridership of the...
It's based on a survey that RTD conducts, usually in October, and it's a calculation that's based on the survey results. And the survey asks a number of questions, but essentially there's two questions that they ask of the riders on the shuttle. One is, are you starting or continuing an RTD trip? In other words, are you getting off a bus or the light rail and using the shuttle to extend that RTD trip? Or is this a trip that is not starting out as an RT, or ending up as an RTD trip? And the reason for that is, if the shuttle were, or excuse me, if the, if the trolley were to charge a fare, the number of people that are using a transfer, they would not be charged a fare. And if you're, if you're doing a trip that is exclusive within the City of Inglewood, then they would be charged a fare, and that's the difference. So what they're trying to do is calculate how many people would be using a transfer to ride the shuttle versus how many people, if we did charge a fare, would actually have to pay. And that's the calculation.
Okay. And then my second question would be on the formula that you're using for fuel, for this, for the formula you're using, are you anticipating, or in your discussions and with Swedish or anybody who's interested in expanding this, would we use a similar formula as far as trying to come up with the charge, and would RTD work with us on that the same way?
RTD would not cover any additional fuel costs beyond the 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 in the evening. So for instance, if Swedish were interested in paying for an additional couple of hours of service during the week, there would be a charge for the actual operation of the shuttle, and they would have to cover fuel costs. RTD will not cover fuel costs.
So this formula would not apply to any expansion?
Correct, correct.
I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. My first question is regarding the fuel tax. We cover the fuel upfront, and it sounds like RTD reimburses that on the back end, and we cover it because we do not pay the fuel tax. And I was Googling around on this last night. Does RTD pay a fuel tax then, on their fuel?
No.
So why would we pay for it upfront? If they're not paying the fuel tax either, it seems like the incentive for us to pay for it upfront is that we're not paying the fuel tax. But if RTD isn't paying it either, why would we incur that expense upfront?
Because the shuttles are, excuse me, the, pardon me for saying shuttle, it's just a number of years of the art shuttle, it's hard to change. The art...
Trolley.
The Inglewood Trolley receives its fuel at the city center, at the city service center, and it's charged based on the cost that the city supplies fuel. And RTD just reimburses the city for that cost.
And so it is cheaper for the city than RTD. We can build RTD directly to that, it does need to go through the city's accounting.
If we did not provide fuel, then the contract price would go up because the vendor would have to purchase fuel on the open market.
Thank you. And then the second question is regarding the January 1, 19 to December 31, 2019, revenue charged per hour, which is $57.98, $57.98 in the current contract. And in the prior contract from 2015, that same expense was at least predicted at, and I'm getting to that page in the packet, and it is page 12, it was predicted then to be at 4709. So it's gone up substantially since 2015. And I know that RTD is reimbursing us for all of this, so it isn't really coming out of Inglewood's pocket directly. Having said that, a lot of RTD funds are from the taxpayers, in a larger sense, I feel like Inglewood still does pay for it. Do you know why there's been such an increase over the past four years?
New buses.
Thank you.
There is a certain life, just like city vehicles, and a couple of years, well, last year in fact, MV purchased new buses, larger capacity, and that cost was included in last year's contract. So that's the difference between the 2014 contract and the 2017 and 2018 contracts.
How many of those buses did they purchase?
Two.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for Mr. Stitt? I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to approve 11C1.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is 9C2, Resolution in Support of Jason Park Playground Grant. Staff recommends that council approve a resolution supporting the city's Arapahoe County Open Space Grant application for Jason Park Playground replacement. Our staff source is Open Space Manager Dave Lee. Good evening, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, members of council. Jason Park is one of three parks that were identified in the 2017 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, so it's one of the big priorities. And by replacing the playground, we'll, we will have realized the first phase of improvements in Jason Park. And neighbors surrounding Jason Park will be able to take their children and their grandkids to a much improved playground there. The project components consist of a two-to-five-year-old play structure for the younger kids, a five-to-12-year-old play structure for the older children, and then some various swings, spinners, social climbing element, climbing bar, and then two digging elements. The playground itself will be ADA accessible. We'll have some bench seating, as well as some picnic tables surrounding the play area for relaxation and to watch the children and for picnicking. And then several of the old pieces of play equipment, the neighbors ask that we retain those in some way, so we're repurposing those. The old merry-go-round will be used as a backdrop to two of the benches to apply as a windscreen for those. And then two of the play structures, the climbing structures out there, will be used as entry monuments. We'll use those as trellises, they'll be up in the air, and we'll put some plants, vines and so forth to go up on and over the trellises. So we're doing that. We're also repurposing, or reusing some of the pea gravel that's out there for the digging area, for the two pieces of digging equipment, and then also creating a little bit of mounding around there, so that'll save on the excavation and hauling off of the materials. The grant request is for $293,700 from Arapahoe County Open Spaces. The match money is $124,900, and that will be coming out of the Open Space Fund, and that'll be under the Grant Matching Funds Project. So the total project is $418,600. The financial appropriation is in the 2018 Open Space Fund, and that fund was given to $615,000 this year, and as of the end of February, only $18,596 have been expended out of that fund. So that leaves a balance of $596,404. And if there are any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lee? Councilmember Berantine?
Is there any restriction on the park right now to go ahead and walk around the park at all?
No, there's no restriction.
Okay.
A portion of it, we fenced off to reseed. We had a very dry, warm winter, and with all the people and dog traffic out there, it really caused quite a bit of area to become basically dirt, including on the playing field. So we've switched all of the athletic games out of there until June, and we're just asking people to stay off of it until we can get it revegetated. So we've started that process, we've gotten the irrigation up early, fertilized, overseeded, and we've gotten some growth.
I will, I will share that with that person who might have misunderstood the restriction that was going on. Is there any intention of putting any sidewalk around that perimeter either?
Yes, we're looking at putting a soft path around there, so that people can walk on that. That was a suggestion of the neighborhood as well. So we're going to start that project this summer as well.
All right. And then, I'm grateful for this, but I'm going to ask, I'm grateful for no comments or filling this hall with issues about dogs on Jason Park. But I do need to ask if there has been any additional concern or cleanup, or is, do we, is it being patrolled better or enforced better so that, and is that the reason we're not having an issue? Or do you believe that there's still an issue and we just need to still address it?
Well, I know that Inglewood Unleashed goes out once a month and cleans up one of the off-leash privileged parks or Canaan Corral. They've had a big impact. I've seen a number of comments on Nextdoor Inglewood about dog owners who go out there, not only will clean up after their dogs, but are vigilant about picking up other leftover duty as well. So I think it's probably as good as it can be.
Okay. I know that that included a lot of conversation in years past about the playground area as well, so you're not seeing that continue to be an issue.
Not currently, no.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, sir. There are $596,000 remaining in the Open Space Fund. This is projected at $124,000, assuming this does get approved tonight. Are there any projects in mind with the remaining balance of that fund?
Yeah, they're all slated for other things. We've got a tree maintenance program, we've got some equip, small equipment, we have the flower bed program that's in there, there's a number of others beyond that as well.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Lee? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve 11C2.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Olson?
I want to thank our staff, and you in particular, and Director Hargrove, for continuously going after these wonderful grants. Our parks are wonderful because of the way that you keep finding these grant funds, so appreciate it.
Thank you. And obviously, from the study... And obviously, from the study session, the neighborhoods and the citizens enjoy it as well.
They do. It's one of the things they notice most, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for all you do, and thank you for your presentation. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to general discussion. Mayor's choice, I think I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I hope you all had a wonderful Easter. And I just would like to put out there that I am having coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, 2766 South Broadway on Wednesday morning from 9:00 to 10:30. So if you're available, please join me. I will be having a town hall meeting on April 12th here at City Center at 7:00 in the evening. So if you're able to join me for that, I would love to have you. So thank you all very much. Councilmember's choice. Who would like to start? Oh, Councilmember Berentine?
I wanted to thank Apparently Public Works and Larry Nemo for, after a year of talking about the trash cans on the 3600 block of South Sherman, they are now gone. I don't know why this got assigned to Public Works, but when we're having this kind of problem, assign it to Public Works all the time, because after a year, it's nice to see that they were able to get that resolved. The council request for the issues with Giving Heart, I want to, I believe that Sergeant McGrath does an amazing job in our community, and I appreciate that he's on the change the trend. And I can understand that there is some concern when somebody's trying to be involved in the community and also with the organizations that are going on. There's been some conversation construed that maybe the police are not being as accurate or coming down on some of the calls that are going on. And I want to make sure that council has all of the memos and information that have been put out. And of course, we need to address any process or procedure to go ahead and correct a report. If a citizen doesn't feel that it's accurate, then there's, I'm sure we have a process for that. And that's why I wanted to bring up that as of, in June of 2017, your report, even though you were involved with those organizations, as you are with the city and of course with your job, you suggested that that organization, that may not be a good location for it. And that it had trouble, the severe network, weather network, had had trouble in two locations and had to leave two other previous locations. I thought you were honest in there and fair. I was not part of the issues that you were dealing with. So if the people who were there feel that they need to have some vetting of that, then I'd like to just make sure we've got a process and procedure that they know how to do that. And thank you Sergeant McGrath for your work. It's greatly appreciated, but we can all do better. And I can see where the concern is, and we just need to be honest and deal with what's going on with it. I want to congratulate the opening of the, if I'm going to say it right, the Duffer House. It's a very unusual concept, business concept, in the old Ingle Nook location. So if you want to play full-body pool, like shoot pool, but with soccer balls, it's a very interesting concept, so you will have to go in there and see. It's family-friendly during the day. I believe that they're going to try and do some entertainment and some other activities, more adult activities in the evening. But my son and I went in there and we, I mean, it was interesting. The people are great. The tenant finish in there looks really nice. So I wish I could explain it well, but you really do have to see what they did in order to kind of get the concept of it. And then Forgies Restaurant in District 3. Really good food. If you like anything with pork, that man does a good job with any of those, but all of their stuff is good. They're celebrating their year anniversary this April. So go by and say hi to them and wish them luck for the next year. Hopefully, they'll come up with something to celebrate with. And then I want to give a shout-out to Devil's Head Distillery over there on Akoma. They are the recipients of the 2018 Berlin International Spirits Competition Awards. They won Colorado Distillery of the Year. Also Aquavit Distillery of the Year. Never heard of that before they went in, but actually, it's pretty good. Apparently, an awesome craft. They won gold medal for their Oak Barrel Reserve Aquavit, which is aged for a year and a half. And then silver medal for their vodka, and bronze medal for the other clearer Aquavit. So they are becoming an emerging business. They've done a good job on their final Fridays in attracting some more attention to our downtown. And I want to give them a shout-out. Congratulations, I guess in their industry, it's a pretty big deal to be Colorado Distillery of the Year. So I'm very proud of them and happy for them. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. I do appreciate, Councilmember Olson, you bringing up putting the homelessness matter on a study session. I think that's critical at this point. This is clearly a recurring issue that we really, I think, need to address sooner than later. And I know we just discussed prioritization and how does that occur on these matters. But, and I know we've got a lot of things on the docket, but if we could get that near the front of the list, I think that it would be really helpful, just so that the community knows we're engaging actively on it as well. And to echo Councilmember Berentine's request for documents, which sounded pretty comprehensive, I too would like to see, and pardon me for not recalling the gentleman's name, where he felt that not only was the report not accurate, but he was victim-shamed, and I'm paraphrasing him there a little bit, as well as the memo from the sergeant that, and again, I'm paraphrasing here as well, that suggests, and it sounds like from June of 2017, that that location for Giving Heart might not be the best location in Inglewood. I'd certainly like to read those amongst the other documents that have been suggested. One of the things that was brought up tonight as well, and it seems to be another recurring issue, is what has happened with Eiff and Emers. I believe it was the last meeting that we voted down the performance audit. But the forensic audit was kind of a sub-conversation throughout the performance audit. I think it might be worth addressing that in a study session. I would be curious to at least know what the expenses associated with that. I know that we're well outside the statute of limitations on any criminal wrongdoing. But I also think that if there was any misuse of Inglewood funds, we shouldn't just ignore it at this point because it's been a certain length of time. And I do think that if there's issues, we can learn from that. If anything did go wrong there, I think we should at least pursue that. So I would be curious to know just the breadth of that audit and what the expense associated with that would be.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
I would like to thank everyone for attending and all the members, many of whom have gone, for speaking and sharing their views and thoughts and requests with the council tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Hope I've gotten everything I was trying to remember. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So first thing was, I wanted to make it known to Member Questa that I'm going to attend the Parks and Rec meeting next week, which then made me wonder if we needed to post it. There's a group of middle schoolers that are presenting that I have met with and given them some feedback on something they're going to present. So I didn't want to surprise you nor anyone else. So whatever you think is important there, if anybody else is planning to go, I'm going to go and watch them present. That's all I'm doing, I won't be speaking. Second thing is, I just came from the ribbon-cutting at my salon suite at the Gerard Place, which is the Marx area of apartments on Old Hampden or 285. And it was quite a turnout for this ribbon-cutting at the chamber put together somewhat last minute because I think we all got a very last-minute request for that. And it was unbelievably positive, really high energy. I haven't been to one quite like that in a while. If you're not familiar with it, it's the whole ground level of that building at 1610 East Gerard. And there are about 30 different salon or estheticians, folks there who own their own business. So this is a really interesting model where the, it's like 90 of, this is the 90th of them opening in the country, that give small business owners, almost all women, the chance to own their own business and create their own wealth. And I'm really excited about it. I would like to encourage you all to take a look at it. One of the things that they said, and the manager who came from Louisiana, is they have never had things happen so easily with the city, ever. So I know we worry about customer service, but in that setting, we might want to look back to see, well, they were just, they found it to be unbelievable. They just thought it was so fantastic. So they have great praises to sing of our city and the way they went through this process. So thank you staff for what they did there. I met with someone this morning who is looking for affordable housing, as I'm sure many of us know folks who are trying to do that. And this is affordable housing in terms of rentals even. So I am wondering if Manager Kek, if the Community Development Department even has a listing of what would be considered our affordable housing, different entities within the city that are like apartment buildings. This is a single mom who's gone through some changes and has a son about 11. And I started to give her some ideas, but I don't know if we have anything like that. Maybe we can talk offline, but I just did want to bring it up. There are people who want to move into our city because they think it's family-friendly, but they're not sure exactly how to access some of the things. And seeing the national survey that was done for our city and seeing 50% are rental and 50% are, well, let's invite people in who really want to be here for rentals and make sure that they get to, you know, stay here. Also, as part of the stemming the tide of homelessness. The last thing is about Giving Heart and homelessness, and I appreciate the people who keep coming out. I do want to see us do a study session on this. Thankful to Members Wink and Martinez that you're willing to do some kind of a dialogue with, I don't know what that's going to look like, but I appreciate your willingness to step forward on that. There's a lot more that we probably need to think about as a council and how we use budgets on this that I think will be good for us. I think that's it for now. Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Just want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and I'm looking forward to working together to find some solutions to the issues with homelessness and the 4300 block. Hoping to get to that really soon. And I appreciate, Councilmember Olson, also the suggestion of bringing it to a study session. I think that's a really good idea, and it's probably going to require several study sessions. So I would like us to take a look at our schedule and see when we can fit that in, so thank you.
All right, thank you. City Managers Report. Actually, can I ask, and maybe you don't have the answer to this. The Assistant City Manager, do we have somebody in mind to facilitate? And May 5th is the date, correct?
May 5th is the date we're going with. What I've done is asked the University of Colorado Denver, some of the contacts I still have over there. I have one professor that, he does not do facilitation professionally. He's kind of tentatively said, hey, if you're in a bind, I'm happy to help out. I think he'd be fine, but probably would need some guidance. I think to be safe, what I'd like to do is put it out on the CML listserv. Many requests come through like that and just see what a few other options are and get an idea of pricing before we make a final decision. We'll work around the date that the council chooses for the retreat.
All right, thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Please note it's done before 9 o'clock.